Great, tonight's date is November 12, 2018. It is 5:30 PM, we're in the city council chambers. Let me give a notice to the public, the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of the agenda items. You're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks for three minutes or less in order that others may be given an opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any councilor specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions or comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. And if you're here for a specific purpose and that purpose has been met, nobody expects you to stick around, come and go as you like. For those who are able, would you please stand and do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Because of the holiday today, I would ask that any veterans please stand and be recognized. Thank you for your service. Roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Isom.
Here.
Lamer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Goudy.
Here.
Hoops absent.
Are there any of the councilors who would like to make any comments before we begin?
Your honor, I would like to make one. At the long-term recovery meeting last week that was at the Marshalltown Public Library, I announced that we were going to, we had a volunteer group that was going to come together to clean up the alleys between Bromley and Woodbury Street from about Fourth Avenue down to about Seventh or Eighth Avenue. We had hoped to do that this coming weekend, but there have been some snags in that issue and it will not happen this weekend. So I want to apologize to those folks, but we are going to get those, that debris cleaned up out of that alley. It may be a little longer. If the weather holds and we can get another weekend here before snow flies, we would like to. If not, we're certainly going to take care of it in the springtime and get that alley cleaned up for those residents who suffered from the tornado back in July.
Thank you. And I hope your ward members appreciate all of the extra work you're putting in to fix up that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Time.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Another comment. I think we should all welcome the credit opinion recently published by Moody's, October 31st. Basically, a summary of our bond rating is AA2, and they say this. "Marshalltown has a healthy credit profile driven by recent growth in valuation along with a financial profile that has healthy reserve levels." I would add a word of caution to all of us that we need to be with our eyes peeled to the budget because we do have the impacts on city government, some of which are unknown abandoned housing, also citizen displacement, so, but I do offer that, and I think it, a copy of that will be available in the newspaper. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, let's move to the next item on the agenda, and that is the special recognition. Chief?
Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. I'd like to call Dan Brandt and Joan Moore up to the podium with me, please. While Dan and Joan are coming up, tonight it's my great honor to recognize two superstar volunteers. You see us talking frequently about staff. Tonight I have the great honor to talk about a couple of superstar community members, quite frankly. For those of you that have been around, as long as I have been anyway, for the last seven years, you've heard me say a few times, I've quoted Sir Robert Peel. And Sir Robert Peel is a gentleman from England that was, is credited with being the founding father of modern-day law enforcement. The weird thing is he did it in like the mid-1800s, but a lot of his principles apply today. But one of the things that he is well-known for saying is the police are the public and the public are the police. What does that mean? It means we all have a responsibility for the policing that goes on in our community. And it's very important for the police department to be engaged in the community. It's equally important for the community to be engaged with the police department. And we're very fortunate in Marshalltown to, I think, have a police department that's been very engaged with the community. But more importantly, to have a community that's very supportive of local government and people that are engaged with the Marshalltown Police Department. When I started here, just a little over seven years ago, I inherited a citizens' police academy that's very successful and has been so for a long time. And we have 20, 25, 30 people attend that every year. And out of our citizens' police academy, we have a volunteer group. If you go through the academy, graduate from the academy, you're eligible to become a citizen volunteer with the police department. And when I walked in the door seven years ago, we had a group of 35, 40 committed volunteers. I also inherited a top-notch, head-of-the-class reserve policing unit. And that's a much smaller group. Those folks have to go through a lot of training. They go through the same amount of training that a full-time police officer goes through. But we're very fortunate to have a top-notch reserve policing unit here and have had one for many, many years, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that. So, I think what that means for us, though, is we're very fortunate as a police department to have people like Dan and Joan that are not only willing to support what we do every day, they jump on the front lines, get in the trenches with us, and do the hard work. And they're great ambassadors for not just the Marshalltown Police Department, but you all and city government. So, I want to talk about Joan first. So Joan is a graduate of our citizens' police academy, and almost every time I see her, she's wearing that shirt very proudly. She is very proud of her involvement with the police department and our volunteer group. And she's been a great ambassador for our department and for city as a whole, for what I thought was a long time. And then I learned here recently, she's just been doing this for about seven years, but she's so involved, she knows so much about what we do, how we do it, that she's like a 30-year veteran. And I've just been so impressed. And when I first got here, one of the things that I did is I scheduled meetings with all of our employees, our paid employees. And I was seeing Joan around the office more than I was seeing some of my captains, quite honestly. And so I thought I was, I thought she must work here. And Alicia Hunter had, no, she's a volunteer. That's how involved she is. When we need something done, she's one of the first people we call because she's going to show up. And she helps us. And she speaks in glowing terms about the police department, and she's been very involved with Courtney Watson, who's here tonight. A lot of people here tonight from the police department to support these people. I think that says a lot. But she's been a big part of helping us out in evidence especially. And Joan and her husband Jim, Jim's here somewhere in the audience, have decided to move to Pennsylvania to be closer to family, and I don't blame them. Now, I am a little suspicious because they're moving right before we're getting ready to move into the new building. So maybe they're trying to get out of the moving work, I don't know. But, no, I know Joan wouldn't do that, but we're going to miss her. And when she reached out to me last week and said that she was leaving, that was one of the saddest things that's happened to me since I've been here because she does such a great job for us. And we enjoy having her around so much, and there's no way we replace her. And I just appreciate your years of service and everything that you've done for the police department, for our volunteer group, and for citizens' police academy. She's one of our biggest recruiters, and I'm not sure how we're going to find more people to go to the academy, but we'll, we'll find a way. But thank you. I really appreciate it. Now, Dan, Dan Brandt, he's been, in some capacity, volunteering for the Marshalltown Police Department for 50 years, as of tonight. Tonight's his anniversary. Now, I don't know what you all were doing 50 years ago, I know what I was doing, nothing because I wasn't even born yet. Okay? So, I just turned 49 a little bit ago. 50 years, and I don't know what Dan's been doing, but he looks much better than me, by the way, let's be honest. So whatever he's been drinking, whatever's in his, in his water, I need some. But Dan, Dan is really well-known, not just locally, but in the state of Iowa for reserve policing. Bob Schubert, Dan Brandt, some others, started the reserve policing unit in Marshalltown. Would not exist if it hadn't been for Dan. And the really cool thing is, reserve policing in Iowa would not exist in the way that it is now if it wasn't for Bob Schubert, Dan, and a couple of Marshalltown residents. They are really the founding fathers of reserve law enforcement in Iowa. Well-known guys. And so I have the privilege of serving on the Law Enforcement Academy Council, and we meet every other month, and Dan is there every other month, representing reserve policing in Iowa, making sure that they have a voice and making sure that guys like me don't screw it up. So, I appreciate everything that Dan has done for law enforcement in Iowa. I appreciate everything that Dan has done for law enforcement locally. I've known Dan as a volunteer here, and he, again, just like Joan, if we need something, he's there. If I ask him to do something, he makes it happen. And we're very fortunate to have Dan as a partner here. And I don't know how many more years you plan to go, Dan, but I hope it's at least 60 because I'm going to be working at least that long. And I want to be here to help, help you celebrate 60. But 50 years of volunteer service to the city of Marshalltown, it's amazing. So, on behalf of the Marshalltown Police Department, I want to thank Dan Brandt for his 50 years of service, and Joan Moore for her many years of service to the police department. Thank you very much.
You know, it's been a long haul, and one of my goals is, is to get into the new police department. That would be my fourth police department in Marshalltown. You know? And I don't know where the years have gone, but it's been a pleasure, and I still plan on sticking around a little longer. I don't know if I'll make 60 or not. Just one other thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to compliment Roger Shell. Roger has been our attorney of the Reserve Association since 1973, I think, and he's been a great help in moving the association forward, and I just think he needs a compliment, too.
I attended the citizens' police academy in the spring of 2008, and at that point I was a retired teacher, and policing and law enforcement became my passion. So I was pretty excited when Dan Brandt and Mike Hankin and I were asked to attend a three-day training session to learn how to start a volunteer organization. We did that in winter of 2010 and got it accomplished by spring of 2011. And I've loved it ever since, it's my passion. Law enforcement is what I want to help in Marshalltown Police Department I've been so proud and happy to be a part of. I will miss you greatly. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to do this.
The next item is another upbeat presentation, and so we would call Lyle Jensen to the microphone, please.
Well, thank you, Mary, Mayor, and thank you for the city council for giving me a chance to talk. I'm Lyle Jensen, born and raised in Marshalltown, graduated class of 1969, currently live outside of Winterset. Don't know how it happened, but next year is our 50th class reunion, and so we, our August reunion committee meeting after the tornado, we decided that the class of 69 wanted to start their second legacy project. For our 40th, we did the, just our class did the message center board for MHS out at the corner of the high school. And we looked at it and a lot of us thought about it, and very quickly, literally in a matter of minutes, we voted to launch the Marshalltown Tree Restoration Fund. All of us grew up, I grew up delivering newspapers under shaded, you know, shaded trees and just the memory of all the beautiful trees we had in the Marshalltown. So we kicked off in August, our Marshalltown Tree Restoration Fund. I went out to, went to the courthouse, or went to the state Capitol, and we have incorporated a nonprofit Iowa corporation that's also IRS 501(c)(3), so for tax deductibility. Kicked off our program at the end of August. We went out and booked, I think, every major tree project, both in the, in the city and the county. We've got the, our first one was Iowa Vets Home. We've committed 50 trees for the west entrance and throughout the campus. Next worked with Brad and Kristen downstairs, 50 trees for City Parks and Rec. We're shooting for over 100 trees with the Trees Forever Terrace Tree Program. And from that, then, we've moved on into the private property goals that we have. We have set up a program, Trees for Vets, Trees for Grandpa and Grandma, and Trees for the first and second ward because of the damage that was done there. Our goal is $50,000 to be raised this next year by September of 2019 to replace 500 trees, both in the county and, and the city of Marshalltown. We're off to a roaring success. In the first 90 days, we've already raised $25,000, so we're halfway there. And so this is a legitimate project that will see fulfillment, that we will meet our goal. I'm confident of that. The reason I'm here tonight is, is that, again, we have every single county and city, but the one that I'd like to get the council's approval on and/or guidance on is specifically, we have, I've met with the leadership of GBS, they're willing to put in quite a sum of money to work in the, in the first ward where a lot of their employees are involved. We obviously have a lot of damage in the second ward also. So what I'm looking is, we've got good marketing programs for everybody. I'm hoping I can get city council's approval that after this meeting I can reach out to the, both Susan and Gabriel, to talk about, you know, an outreach program, a how can we get in touch with your members? Can I get mail, you know, can we do mailers? But the whole idea here is to now move from the public, where we do have good approvals and good processes, to be sure everybody knows that there's a chance here that we could give you a free, you know, six to eight-foot tree for your property, that if you lost it, we, I got to work on how we would do applications. But it's pretty much what I'm hoping for today or come out of this meeting would be follow-up, where I can have approval to work with the council and specifically, you know, Susan and Gabriel, to talk about outreach programs for your members in your district. So, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. What a great program. And please tell your class how pleased we are about this.
I will, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's go to item F, consent agenda. We're going to poll number four to discuss it a little bit, but Madam Secretary, would you read all of the other items on that?
Approve the council minutes for October 22nd and November 5. Approve bill list in the amount of $2,832,187.8. Recede the civil service list for street maintenance worker two and firefighter new hire. Motion to set a public hearing for November 26 on an ordinance to rezone property east of Walmart. Resolution approving engineer statement of completion and accepting the runway and 18 and 36 taxiway with final project cost of $475,332.19. Resolution approving mandatory reporting policy and approve the tree trimmer for Mitchell Logging and Tree Service.
Your honor, I'd move for approval. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good, carried. Let's focus on item number four then, which is a public hearing for November 26, 2018, an ordinance to amend the planned unit development for the property at 1501 South Seventh Avenue.
Do you want to motion first, or me? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd move for approval. I asked, it was done back in the 90s, and I don't think anybody here knows what's going on, so it'd be nice just to have a little explanation of what's going on.
Absolutely. So, yes, this is, do you, I just want to make sure I get the formalities. Did you know?
Yeah, a second? Okay, good.
Okay. So, right, this is a planned unit development in the area of like Bobcat Estates, Sundance Apartments, kind of along Seventh Avenue on the west side. And so as you mentioned, there's a, a lot of the area was PUD. We have several different PUDs in that area going back to the 90s and as early as the early 2000s, as some of those changes have happened with some of the development in that area. This particular piece fronts right on Seventh Avenue, south of Sundance Apartments, and has been part of the PUD, Planning and Development, but not really laid out in detail. So we had, conceptually, that it was going to be multifamily housing in some form or fashion, but not having a specific developer at the table for it. We haven't really gotten into the weeds, so to say, on some of that. So we now have a developer with interest as part of the loan comp housing tax credit project through the Iowa Finance Authority that we've talked about, that is looking to finalize kind of what that scope will look like as part of that planned unit development in terms of layout, site design, number of units, building layout. So, we will see that PUD, the planning commission, did have a discussion at their last meeting about the project and recommended to go through that full process that we do typically with the concept and preliminary master plan and outlining all those details, since it has been so long without that detail. And so that's why we have a public hearing request as part of that review. The commission will be having a public hearing at their meeting on Thursday this week, and then we will be seeing an ordinance that comes to you with that detail at your next reading. So we're looking for that public hearing at the first reading for that, so we have the opportunity, if you so desire, to waive a second and third, that that is an option. As we've talked about previously, those tax credit applications are due in January, so we do have a lot of interest in getting things done before the end of the year. We can do that without waiving readings, but we wanted to at least provide that option. So, that's kind of ahead of.
Any questions or comment by the councilors or public? Well, it's called a roll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Very good, carried. Let's go to item G, reports, and the first one is the 13th Street update.
Good evening, I'm Neil Dewall. I live at 1504 Brentwood Terrace here in Marsh Town. I'm the president of 13th Street District Committee. The committee has been a part of the revitalization of 13th Street District since 2007. I'm just going to give a brief overview of what's been done since 2007 and now. At the end, I have an ask for the city council. I don't think we ever had a, an overview or an update from this committee, so I'd like to give you some updates for this. So just the brief overview of the timeline, over $5 million was spent on infrastructure by the city of Marsh Town, other organizations like Martha Island Ty Foundation, Medic, and the Marsh Town Development Fund, private donors and business owners in this area. That money went to new culverts for Brady Creek, new light poles along 13th Street, new road top in Plaza, the Franklin Field Gateway Project, installation of Echo, the public art, and food stall courts. Also, there were investments by business owners such as Hermits and Orthodontics, Embellish Salon, its unique, The Flower Shop, CI Care, Breathe Integrative Therapy, Express Mart, West End Perk, and The Cabinet Shop. Those businesses have been new to the district in the past two, three years. So, lots of investment by business owners, the city, a lot of nonprofit organizations. So with moving forward, 2018, February 2018, our committee developed this visioning and strategy matrix. What do we want to do in the next one to three years and five to eight years and so on? So our goal is, overall goal is to be good community partners with city of Marsh Town, Marsh Town School District, the other nonprofits in this area. Then on top of that, our goal was to become a 501(c)(3). So as of last month, we are a 501(c)(3) and nonprofit organization. Another great thing is we do, we host family-friendly events. So, in September, we had the Fall Market Harvest Festival, which drew, which we estimate about 800 people. The vendors were really happy, and the food trucks ran out of food. Food stall courts, it's been a great asset to the community. I think last year, December, there was, it was super cold and there was a bunch of kids playing soccer, food stall. But in the tornado damage, the sport court got lifted up, two of the, the courts were damaged. So we rallied about 23 volunteers Saturday morning after the tornado and laid tile by tile the sport courts. Took us about six hours with the help of the manufacturer down in, into the Moyn area to come, put that back together. So, a lot of work, a lot of volunteers came out to help. So, with over $5 million investment by the city, private and public donors, and investment by small business owners, we would like to install the public safety cameras in conjunction with Crime Stoppers of Marshall County Initiative. So with the support of Mark Osmondson, Chief Tupper, Tom Dimerly, we educated the small businesses in that district to understand the value of the public safety cameras. As of the past year or so, there's only been two or three incidents. They weren't huge, but we want to have the cameras installed to avoid maybe the next, hopefully not, but if there's an issue, we'll have those on camera. So we were able to educate the business owners on the value of the public safety cameras, and then we asked for their commitment. So we said, could each of the 10 businesses commit to $250 to the total quote of the three public safety cameras? And as of today, we got all 10 on board to total $2,500 in commitment to go to the public safety cameras. I'm not sure if you remember, but we did apply for the grant back in January, February for the, the grant application for funding through the city. But we would like for you to consider funding the rest of the project for the public safety cameras to be installed in the district overlooking the $5 million in investment. So, the total quote you find in your packets is $9,280. The 10 businesses committed to $2,500, so that the balance would be $6,780. So we would hope you would consider approving this funding to get these public safety cameras installed.
Thank you. I'm pretty sure it was your efforts that also, when the line was coming in and putting in all the poles above, we were able to work with them, work with 13th Street, and now we kept the nice look of the area, too, by burying those cables.
Right, thanks for reminding me.
Yeah, well, if you guys hadn't formed and done what you've done down there, that never would have happened.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
If this is a funding request you'd like to consider at a future meeting, could there be a motion to either place it as a future discussion item or as a resolution on a future agenda?
I would so move.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, public comment? Roll call.
Thank you.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Good, carried, thank you. We'll get you on the agenda. All right, let's go to item H. Madam Secretary, would you read the first resolution?
Resolution approving an agreement with Short Elliott Hendrickson for the development of a downtown master plan.
Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion?
I was going to say, I'll let Michelle speak, too, and I'll just mention that we do have Lucas Casey with SEH, SEH Short Elliott Hendrickson, who is here in the audience. A big thank you needs to go out to our evaluation team who read through 10 proposals to narrow it down to four, to then conduct interviews over, I think it was six hours over two days, probably more like 10 hours over two days to get to the point where SEH was our selection. That committee was Steve Valbrecht, Jenny Eder, Nate McCormick, Sue Cahill, Council Member Cahill, and Julie Winter with Region Six, along with Michelle and I. And so that was a lot of time commitment to get. And so, that was a lot of time commitment to get this before you tonight so that we could get moving as quickly as possible.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director, just a couple comments to add to that. Just as a reminder, this funding is coming from the Martha Ellen Ty Foundation in part through $100,000 grant, and then through the U.S. EDA, Economic Development Administration, Department of Commerce for another $100,000. So, we are looking at that total $200,000 budget, all grant-funded for this project. The downtown plan will include a pretty wide area going from Third Street to Fifth Avenue, up just north here of Grant, down to Nevada, definitely a focus on the opportunity zone as well as a lot of other components in the downtown. And we'll be having a lot of public engagement during this process. It's going to be very important throughout this plan, and so we're real excited to work with SEH and their team about doing that and getting some real, you know, hands-on stuff that we can use to help develop this plan further. And I think as far as the timeline goes, we are looking for efforts to kind of wrap up at the end of May, early June. And for that plan, we all know everybody's anxious to get going. It's a lot of work ahead, so we encourage participation by the public and the council to be engaged in this process as it moves forward, and you'll be hearing from us very soon. And I don't know if Lucas has anything you want to add at all, but he is here, maybe after a chance to talk with him when he's around doing other things, and the process begins, we want to make sure that we see people involved.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Comment here.
Yes, sir.
I reviewed the proposal and the background especially of SEH, and I'm very impressed with their background and qualifications. However, in that plan, I note also there is a line item, if you will, on one-way, two-way streets, and there's plenty of time for public input, and I would hope the public would take advantage of that. There are some more issues there that need resolution. So, thank you.
And I see Karen Gregory in the audience. Thanks again for what the Ty Foundation has done for things like this. Other comments?
I'd like to make one. We're looking at selling a bunch of parking lots. If they're going to be done by June, I guess I'm not ready to sell parking lots because we, if we want the people to come downtown, but there isn't any parking lots for them to park in, that's not really a good idea. I think we ought to maybe give these guys a chance to do their work, and then we take a good, hard look at what we want to get rid of after that, but let's get the downtown going first. Just an idea.
And I will say, that certainly is a consideration as we're talking about selling of any properties. One thing to note, and this was something that came out in the SEH presentation as well as others, is that there are often common misperceptions related to parking, and so that's where I would say, we can, though, we're going to be making some decisions, or you'll have some decisions before you, before or in the very intro stages of them working on their plan, but part of that scope of work is really looking at, what do we need parking right now? And then, to get to the vision that they're going to help us get to, what do we need for parking at that point as well? So, it's really a moving target there. So, but that's where I don't think in any conversations that we've, that they've said, you should stop doing what you're doing. So, Lucas, I'll let you.
Lucas Casey with Short Elliott Hendrickson, 5414 Northwest 88th Street in Johnston, Iowa. Honorable mayor, members of the council, city staff, members of the public. Thanks, first of all, to staff and the selection committee for recommending us and for the council considering here. I think the city administrator had it just right in that you have a lot of moving targets, right? It's a lot of chicken/egg situations going on where we'll be planning, business owners are doing, wanting to move forward, to capitalize on opportunities to rebuild and capture momentum. So, we've got a tall order for us, but it's one that we're ready to tackle alongside of all of you. And I think, like Jessica said, it's not one that you should necessarily push the pause button and freeze completely, because once we dig in, we can, we can address things that come up on an individual basis as well, and we can, we can kind of take them on, out of order, in order, or in a more holistic approach. But I think the, you, the mayor, city council should continue to make considerations on a case-by-case basis, and always look to us if we can provide input as those decisions come. But, you know, in the end, if you have to delay those, that's, that's at the pleasure of the council. But certainly, we're going to have lots of things moving in concert and parallel as we go forward. So, we don't, we certainly, due to a planning process alone, don't want to slow down any of the momentum that's moving, but want you to be able to maximize the opportunity for business owners in the interim as well. So, with that, I'll just say to the administrator, Kinzer had it, you said it very well, I decided to repeat it. But, if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those too, but just really, really appreciate the opportunity, and our team really looks forward to working alongside of you all.
Well, the one, the one that I had in mind was the one over on Main Street next to the old Iowa Wholesale Building, because you weren't here, and some of the council people weren't here, but we heard from Iowa Valley that when they opened the facility to help people learn English and do those kinds of things, there was no parking. And so, we kind of said we'd leave that parking lot alone so they'd have some place for those people to park that are students of theirs going, going to school. And for us to sell that, clear off now, that, that facility now has absolutely no parking whatsoever for those, for those students that are going to Iowa Valley. So, that was my, that's, that's what I was using as a key, why we shouldn't be moving quite so fast to move all the parking lots out. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Your competition was pretty impressive too. I mean, the other nine companies all had very good credentials, so congratulations for coming to the top.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or public comment? Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
And let's go on to resolution number two.
Resolution setting date for public hearing on an agreement with Marshall Town Central Business District for fiscal year 2019 through 20.
Sir, a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Tie goes to Cahill.
Oh, it wasn't me.
It wasn't? Okay.
I did it.
Second. Yeah, they're alto.
Okay. Anyone want to address this one?
Yeah, this is, we use tax increment financing to help support the Marshall Town Central Business District with our annual agreement. And one point that I do want to make clear, shortly after the tornado, there was an action taken to reallocate $40,000 to the Central Business District. And I want to make clear, that was in this current fiscal year, which ends June 30th. What's before you tonight is for support for them starting July 1st of 2019. But because it does require an agreement, and it does require a public hearing, this is before you now so that we can get it on the December 1st tax increment financing certification if you would so choose to move forward with this item. And so, they are requesting $30,000 for next year. The, prior to the tornado, we were providing $26,000 in this current fiscal year. So, it's a modest increase at this point. And we do have Cindy and Jenny with the Central Business District if there are any questions.
It's my understanding too, the CBD is reaching out to all downtown business owners, not just its members. Is that accurate too? Okay, good, thank you.
Goudy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good, carried, and thanks for the good work you do downtown. Let's go to resolution number three, please.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of $2,400,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond, Series 2018, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
I move for approval, your honor.
My second.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director, this is our last step. If you approve this, the bonds will be issued, and we will receive our funds December 3rd. Again, this is for $1 million in streets, $900,000 in sidewalks, and $500,000 in a parking lot. Any questions?
And we were lucky with the interest rates we got.
Yes.
3%.
2.90.
One question on the description. I see we listed the waterworks, and I didn't know that we ever did anything for the waterworks. They're a separate item, but it's listed on the bonds, on the description of work to be done, clear at the bottom, so you might want to delete that off.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments, or public comment? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good, carried. Then, item number four is the, to set a public hearing on the sale of 20, oh, it is a public hearing. Oh, then we have to go to my pink cheat slip. Would you read item number four for me, and then I'll figure out how to declare the public hearing open?
We have a public hearing on the sale of 22 North Center Street, followed by a resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 22 North Center Street.
Very good, thank you. And at 6:12 now, I declare the public hearing is open. Have there been any written comments received by the clerk?
None other than the written bids.
Any public comments? Staff review?
No, I was going to say, public comments are before staff review.
And I'm sorry, I didn't see you coming.
That's okay. Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So, as one of the bidders, I wanted to talk about the city administrator's memo. And in the memo, she states several things, which I think I can help address. It says that I'm asking for a 10-year tax abatement, and that it wouldn't be eligible for it if there was no new value to the property. And since I'm asking for a dollar lease from the city, and I assume they may not be putting money in it, but they might, I guess the tax abatement doesn't really apply. It could be waived or whatever. The $900, or $9,000 in property taxes based on an increment, or based on assessed value of 240,000. So, in that, the Iowa law does state that if the city is leasing the property, that they have to pay property taxes. That's, that's that. But, the city gets 37% of that property tax back. So, and then 44% goes to the school, not a bad donation. If you take, let's just assume that you're paying the $9,000 in expenses and taxes and the $14,000 total. If you take $183,000 and divide it by 14,000, you get a 13-year payback. So, that doesn't sound like a bad deal. You don't have to spend $183,000 upfront to, you just have to, you know, pay the incremental each year sometime. You might want to expand the city offices into it. If it's leased by you, then that option is there. If it's owned by someone else, it's not. There are contingencies in order to sell it for $35 to YSS. We have to spend $100,000 to upgrade the elevator, according to Ms. Kinzer, and we have to spend $83,000 to separate the building. The offer that I'm putting out there basically negates that $100,000 expense, and it also negates the $83,000 expense. Now, I know it's tied to other properties we're going to talk to later, and that'll all be on your vote now. Now, YSS is a good organization, and there's no reason the city can't sublease it. In fact, I said that in my offer. And if you sublease it to YSS, they're a tax-exempt organization, so you don't have to pay the property tax. So, that negates the property tax. So, there's all kinds of things in here, in this memo, that kind of may or may not apply. And what I find really interesting is that no one from the city or Medic has come to talk to me about this offer and see what kind of benefit it is. And it seems like I've laid out a really good plan to save the city a whole, whole lot of money and still let everybody have their cake, per se. So, I'm concerned that the memo is written in a negative light in respect to a pretty good offer, and I hope you'll consider the offer. I think it's really good for everybody. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue, and I have read Mr. Eaton's proposal, and I agree with him with what he has stated. It is a very good offer. I would want the council to consider it. The subleasing to the Youth Shelter Services, I recall when it was stated that we had to have the new police department and fire department, and as you all recall, I voted no on that combo deal for my own reasons. It was stated that the basement wasn't serviceable, but I heard at the last meeting that the youth shelter has been working out of that area, if I recall correctly. But Mr. Eaton has, gave a really good proposal, and I would hope the council would consider it. Thank you.
David Hicks, Director of Youth and Shelter Services, or YSS of Marshall County. Our intent was, was to purchase the building. I've been the director and employee there for 23 years. We have never owned property in Marshall Town. We've always rented. YSS is a great organization, puts a lot of benefit back and value back into the community. We've had now three buildings in my history of employment at YSS, and we've always been a renter. And due to no fault of our own, some of those buildings have been sold. We've had to move out. This last time, a tornado occurred, and we were forced to find a new place. And yes, we are in the basement of the Marshall Town Police Department in a 900-square-foot room. 911 Center is down there, as well as their administrative unit. It's certainly met our needs temporarily, but we certainly have a need to expand. The services are out there, and we intend to meet those services. Like I said last month, we tend to expand some mental health counseling services, some of our behavioral counseling services as well. The space is required for that expansion, and the police department would certainly meet our needs, and we intend to be a great downtown partner, as we have been for 35 years now as a building owner.
Can I ask a question of our, David?
Sure.
David, what would the impact of having the space leased to you versus owning the building itself? What would be the impact to your organization?
Sure. The only thing we'd be looking at is having to work that into our budget, you know, obviously have to pay utilities and whatnot as an owner, but we'd have to work, you know, what we'd have to pay for rent into our budget as well. We don't control our own destiny either. If the building changes, gets sold, they don't want us, lease ends, we're again kind of where we are at the current time, which this would then be our, then fourth or fifth move at that point. So, that would be the factor, that we would not control our own destiny. We can't make the building our own. We can't do what we think we'd want to do with it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, Lee Bottner, 401 Orchard Drive. I also have had the opportunity to look at Mark Eaton's proposal. This is a 10-year lease that would go back to YSS, and I personally think what David does and his group is awesome in our community, and I think as a city, we really need to step forward and look at the creative solutions that are on the table that Mr. Eaton has proposed. It is a win-win-win for several parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Anna Wolfers, 213 Thomas Drive. I would also look, you know, like at a financial stance, one, you're getting $35 for and spending a lot of money to upgrade it in order to be able to sell it. One, you're taking it off your books that you don't have to pay for, allowing other community resource programs to benefit also, and it saves a lot of taxpayer money too. So, things to consider.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, we go to staff preview.
Yes, your honor, I did include a memo in the packet, which kind of broke down the two different offers, and I am recommending that the council proceed with the sale of the property to YSS. It certainly does not have the It certainly does not have, um, the, the dollars up front, um, that, uh, Mr. Eaton's proposal does. But what it does do is it eliminates that year-to-year operating cost, um, that, uh, you know, quite frankly, it comes back to a conversation that we've also had about the Senior Citizen Center, and how do we make sure that our general fund budget is, um, operating and not losing in areas where, um, it's, it's not our responsibility to provide, you know, public service space. That's not a core responsibility, um, for the city of Marshall Town. It's something that we've taken on in the past, and, um, through the Senior Citizen Center, the direction was ultimately to, to end that, um, as of December 31st of 2019. This is something where you can argue with the costs and what it would be for taxes and everything. The big unknown on this is, is maintenance. And I think that would be the thing that I would encourage you all to think about as well, under a triple-net lease, that the city would be responsible for all maintenance. Um, I can tell you that, uh, in the two years that I've been here, we completely defunded the capital improvement plan of even short-term maintenance projects for that building, because our intent was to get rid of it at some point. Now, it does have a new roof, a new air conditioning as a result of the tornado, which was, um, certainly not planned for at, at any point, but is, uh, certainly an asset or a benefit to the building right now. Uh, at, at this point, that's, that's where there's, there's the short-term and there are the long-term costs. Um, the elevator has to be upgraded regardless. Even if we were to just mothball the building, we still have to do something with that elevator, because it feeds City Hall as well. And so that, that happens, has to happen regardless. So it's the eighty-three thousand dollars for separation of the, the heating system, um, and closing off some entrances, and I, I can't recall exactly what the other items were that made up that eighty-three thousand dollars. That's really the cost that we're looking at. Um, I can tell you that, uh, as, as a resident of the old part of City Hall, boiler heat is not the most efficient heat at this point. Installing an HVAC system in the old part of City Hall, um, that it's separately running off of, will improve our energy efficiency of the building. We also, in planning in our capital improvement, uh, process, did have this project budgeted, basically the one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars worth of repairs, did have that budgeted in fiscal year twenty. And so, we're talking about now, we're not there to fiscal year twenty yet. This would be advancing that up, but this was something that there had been some, um, foresight and thought into in last year's budgeting process, knowing that the vacancies, the vacating the building would happen at some point in 2019. So, um, I'm, I do continue with my recommendation, um, of selling the property to YSS of Marshall County for thirty-five dollars.
Any other, um, staff comments or review? Next item on the, uh, public hearing agenda is council comments. Any comments by the counselors?
I have one. Um, I'm, I understand Mr. Eaton's proposal. Um, my, I, I, if it hadn't been for the tornado, I'd still want to tear the building down and just get rid of it, because it's been a sore spot in this council's pocketbook for twenty years, and we just don't need it anymore. I don't mind the idea of selling the building, but I think we're selling it too cheap. Uh, part of our job as council people is to take care of the finances of this city. And if you take a look at that building, now that it's got a new roof, a new air conditioner, um, the building is worth more than thirty-five dollars. I don't care if it is another nonprofit. That means the building isn't, isn't going on the tax roll. It'll be still off, off the tax rolls. I think you either get more money for the building and get some value out of it, or we just knock it down. That's my.
Any other comments by the council?
Can you, um, please verify, just clarify for me once again, the difference in the, um, if we, um, separate from the building, if we truly sell it, then we are doing away with the boiler, we have to discontinue the boiler heats and provide heat for this building we're in now? A different system of heat, is that correct?
Not in this building we're in now. We're technically in the old Carnegie building.
Okay.
So this one's on its own separate system. It's the old City Hall, um, at 24 North Center, that is the one we're talking about.
Okay. So we, we have to provide heating for that? And the other piece is, um, I'm trying to think what the other piece is there that, uh, I'm just trying to clarify the
The elevator.
The elevator. And the elevator, you said, in order for will YSS, it, or whoever owns the building, if we sell it to YSS, they will have to upgrade the elevator?
No, because it serves 24 North Center Street as well, which, uh, is our facility. And so the idea is that the city, because it's still serving our floors, we then make the needed upgrades, because it is a license under our name. And then we would be working with YSS to come up with basically an annual maintenance agreement to have them cost-share in any of the, um, inspection expenses, and then put a plan forward for how we repair the elevator when it would need to be repaired.
In the lease agreement with Mr. Eaton, and it may be a question for Mr. Eaton, and I'm, again, just clarifying my lack of financial knowledge, so, um, I just want to make sure that I understand. The lease agreement, I understand that it would include that the city maintained the repairs on the building, correct?
It's a triple-net lease, yes.
And can you give me a better explanation than what I could find on a triple-net lease?
Well, a triple-net lease means you pay the taxes and the insurance and the repairs, and, and maintain the building. And so, basically
But we do not pay you anything for the leasing?
Correct, a dollar. Basically, it's a dollar.
Okay.
And, and the proposal is, you just sublease it to YSS, and that saves you all this money, and all the maintenance that she's talking about basically goes to your tenant if you write the lease correctly. And they're gonna have to do that, maintenance anyway, as a building owner. So, I am just basically giving, getting the city out of spending a whole lot of money, and everybody else still gets what, what they want. Okay, it doesn't get torn down. But
And if you could add, just, if you were to give us a two-sentence or a three-sentence, um, explanation of why this is the benefit to the city, I understand the, the costs and the leasing, and your other pieces, the other components of the other properties.
Right.
My understanding is that you would repair the senior center.
Correct.
Bringing it back to its
Bringing it up to current code.
Current code? Okay.
As I have to do.
So like I say, if you could give me a two-sentence, what's the benefit from your view?
So, so basically, the hundred thousand dollar offer for all the properties in, in, basically pays for the elevator, according to her estimates, okay? Uh, the eighty-three thousand dollars isn't required to be spent, because you don't have to separate the buildings. You can lease it to them with utilities included, whatever. The senior center gets repaired, because I'm asking you to donate me the seven hundred thousand approximately that we're gonna spend to demo it and put it in a hole, and sell it to a developer for ten thousand dollars. So, I've basically supported the seniors' center and restored it to, like, you know, basically to code. And I've paid for the elevator, and I've kept the taxpayer from having to pay eighty-three thousand dollars to separate the building. And YSS gets a space, which, nobody's gonna cancel their lease on it, 'cause you're the leaseholder. And unless you want to take it over and put offices in it, which, then you'd need it anyways, so... And, as far as I know, new roof, new air conditioner. It's got a sump pump in the basement, so the water problems are fixed. So it's a perfectly good building. Otherwise, you would be selling some piece of junk to a, to a nonprofit and saddling them with a bunch of expenses, so I can't understand all the logic. But, I'm sorry, it was more than two sentences.
That's all right. And can you, um, the benefit to you, is it purely altruistic? Or will you be charging the seniors? Is that where you will get a financial benefit from it? I'm, again, I'm just trying to see the big picture.
The seniors have been paying rent all along, and they have a budget, and, and, and so they can pay rent.
Okay.
Um, there's tons of grants and things like that for everybody to use. I'm owning these properties, and that's the benefit to me.
Okay.
They're capital assets when we're done.
If the, um, rehabilitation of the senior center takes more than what the insurance costs or the insurance dollars that you're asking, and, um, do you have plans to, again, put it back up to code and not just say, well, that's all I got, that's all I'm putting into it?
One of the things that makes it a lot easier when I do it versus the city doing it is, I, there's a, my intent is, the senior center is a public, is a pride project, okay? And there are a lot of developers who've contacted me, several of them, and said, we want to be in, we want to help restore this building. We think it should be restored. There are city staff that thinks it should be restored. And I think that that's a good project for the community to stand behind. And, so there's, you know, a goal right there. Now, I've looked at it, I've been through it, I've taken all the pictures, and I know what shape it's in. Okay, it really should have been tarped after, but now I get to gut it and put all the new stuff in, which brings it up to code. So, that's a lot easier than kind of piecemealing it. And I think, fiscally, the project can be done with the insurance money, but while we're doing it, let's look for some grants to see what we can get, you know, the state to chip in and help. Maybe there's some historic grants. It's a ninety-eight, ninety-eight-year-old building, soon to be a hundred, so...
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other council comments?
I just have one, um, only because I was not here on that, uh, meeting, but, uh, you may have to refresh my memory, but I believe that we voted five to zero to tear that building down. Is that not correct?
I don't know if it was exactly five to zero, I think it might have been four to one. Um, I believe Council Member Lamer voted against it.
I stand corrected.
And I am proceeding with your direction at this point.
Okay, I stand corrected, four to one. So, in, in that context, um, and I'm not sure how we have to back up, but I think in order to even consider, uh, any of these proposals, uh, one, uh, Mr. Eaton, which is contingent on 22 North Center, and it's all kind of a one package, but as, uh, from what I understand, that, um, unless we reverse that decision, that we're in line to tear that building down. So I think that's the first consideration we need to do, is whether we want to rescind that order to tear the building down, which we have to do first, before we can even proceed. Just a question, is there a statement there?
What's the attorney saying?
Mr. Goudy, my representative, may I respond to your question?
Sure.
Lynda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. I was in attendance at that meeting. The PR did report it wrong. Mr. Lamer did vote no. Now, as I understood, the minutes should reflect that it was stated to take the six hundred and ninety thousand-plus check, and I don't believe that it said that it would be demolished, because the insurance adjuster offered one point two million to restore it up, or the six hundred and ninety thousand. But it didn't say that it had to be torn down. The city administrator can correct me if I am mistaken. Mr. Lamer, you could correct me if I'm mistaken. But it was to accept the six hundred and ninety thousand dollar check. Ms. Cahill was here as well. Do I, am I stating it incorrectly? Mr. Goudy has always said he appreciates citizen input, so this is my input. The minutes should reflect what that was.
I, I can just clarify that my memo with, and the resolution for accepting the payment was to recommend to demolish the building, and that was what was accepted. And so that was clear throughout that whole discussion of many weeks, that that's, that's what the actual, accepting the actual cash value payment was to be used for.
Okay, you can put me out of order if you'd like, but I'd like to make a statement here. Everyone has known my position on the senior citizen building from January twenty-third at that council meeting. On this one-hundred-year anniversary of the World War I, I would like to thank all of our veterans and those that spoke here publicly to this council. I would, uh, like to, whatever this council decides today to do with our city properties, uh, that are for sale, I would remind the council, mismanagement has resulted in our hospital going bankrupt, the school system owing the IRS, state officials, Iowa Constitution and federal constitution. Our national motto is
Three minutes are up, man, sorry.
Okay, thank you. You've allowed other persons longer time.
I did let Mr. Eaton go about ten, fifteen seconds over the timer. Other consular comments?
I have, I have one more question. If we're gonna, if there's some consideration for Mr. Eaton's ideas, since he's tied them all together, and we're going to, later on in the meeting, gonna have a discussion of all the rest of them, could we not make a decision on this one until we look at all those other ones at the end? Don't we have five or six proposals at the end that we're gonna discuss the same thing? And they're all tied, and he's, since he's tied them all together as one package?
Yes, so, um, yes and no. So basically, you can table the resolution, you can complete the public hearing, the mayor can close the public hearing, you could then table the resolution on the agenda, which is to sell it to, um, YSS. That resolution would then come back to your next agenda, I, or next agenda on the twenty-sixth, where then, depending on your, uh, discussion at the end of the agenda, you could determine whether or not you would need to then vote it down. If you do decide you want to sell it to Mr. Eaton at the meeting on the twenty-sixth, then you would need to make a motion to basically bring forward a resolution setting a public hearing on accepting his proposal. There is, again, a thirty-day waiting period where additional proposals could be received. And then you basically, you start the process all over again.
Well, I was, what I was thinking is, we could, we could close the public hearing, we could have a, I have a motion to table this until we get to the discussion period, and after the discussion period, take it back up again. That way, we'd have a chance to look at all of them together, but still make a decision yet tonight, since you're holding the public hearing tonight? Is that possible?
Sure.
Pretty sure it's possible to table this, uh, matter and close the public hearing and resume, but these other items are discussion items only, and they're not for a resolution. I know it. That's... So, so you can't make a decision on those other items? No, but we, what I was thinking is, if we tabled, tabled this one until we had that discussion, and then bring it back up then and, and make a, a final, uh, I, I guess we've already closed the regular meeting though, haven't we? So, yeah, it won't work, sorry.
Unless anyone else wishes to speak, let's, uh, declare the public hearing is closed as of
Can I make a public comment?
Yes, sir.
Lonnie Hoglan, 909 Stegman. I don't know a lot about these buildings or this subject. I know I'm restored faith in government with what Mr. Leon Lamer is trying to do. He's trying to figure out why you're selling something for thirty-five dollars when you got someone offering a lot of money on the other end. It sounds like Leon's trying to do something intelligent, but I don't know. But he's trying to do something here, so, good luck, guys.
Yes.
Anna Wolfers, 213, ooh, I have, there we go, static electricity. And comment to my Goudys, I know a couple meetings ago, you guys did open up the offering floor again to accept other offers if they were to come in, including Mr. Eaton's plan. So, it seems like a lot of work and effort for his part than to be like, oh, we already sold it, so no deal, when there is still chance, and obviously, four hundred and twenty-one public, um, petition signatures that would vote for that. And it is our tax dollars and public money that's being that would vote for that, and it is our tax dollars and public money that's being spent, and they end deal of either way you decide. So, you did open it back up for more offers, including others besides Mr. Eaton's. You've already tabled him once, like, he kind of wants answers, and the snow's already starting to fly, so, like, decisions need to be made instead of keep being prolonged.
And I remind people that comments are to be not directed at any specific consular. That's happened a couple times tonight. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Is it on? It's not quite tall enough. Robin Mansiri, 707 East Boone Street. I have been a resident of Marshalltown all of my life, and 29 of those years have been working at the Senior Center. We have provided services, whether it be the Senior Center downstairs, as a gathering place, a place to just have your friends and, and be around people, get out of your home, come to lunch. We've been a part of the city for over 30 years, and as a resident of Marshalltown, I just like to say how important the Senior Center is to the citizens of this town. There are so many people who live alone, who have no out, who don't have family. Think about it. You don't have family coming to your house, but you can go to a center and have that family there, because we all are family, whether we're living downstairs or upstairs, or how long we've been there. But to, I would just like to say that it's an important place to those of us who have always been involved in it. Maybe you haven't been involved in it, maybe you don't know what it's about, the services that everybody provides, and the friendship, the, the time that they can be out of their homes and go to a place and just, a place to call their own. We've got so many youth projects, and I'm not talking about YSS, not at all, but let's give, let's help the seniors. They're lost. They are, they're lost without a place to go. And that's not your fault, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that that's how important the Senior Center is to the seniors of Marshalltown. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands up, and so at 6:44, we will declare the Is there, should I anticipate a resolution to table or not, give that opportunity?
The resolution is on the agenda for consideration, if there's a motion in a second.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve the resolution, to sell it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
One, one item I would just like to point out as a clarification is that Mr. Eaton and his proposal is contrary to what has been said before you tonight from YSS, that YSS wants to own a building, they do not want to lease a building. And so, building a scenario where the city leases back a bill, we lease a building and then sublease it again to an entity that has said that they don't want to lease a building, is a pretty big if to, to move forward with at this point, when those conversations would not be ones that we have had.
Can I ask one further question, following up on that? Is the, with Mr. Eaton's proposal, is it for a 10-year lease from the city? Was that stated in there, that the city would lease it for 10 years and pay the triple lease? I, I just didn't know if there would be a, a chance if we decided that that wasn't working for us. Is that Mr. Eaton, I'll ask you, was it for a 10-year?
Out of order, if I could have.
No, go ahead.
So it is a 10-year lease for a dollar a year, that's $10. But if you wanted to get out of it earlier, I mean, again, this is the whole problem. No one from Medic or the city has come to talk to me. They talked with all developers. No one has come to talk to me and say, holy moly's, you can save us a whole lot of money, and let's see what we can work out. Not one person. And, and I'm trying to figure out why, and there we go. But it is a dollar for 10 years, but, like I said, so, I mean, it is possible for you to table it until further discussion.
When, when do we anticipate the police department moving down to the new building? Is it March or April, somewhere in there?
March 1st of 2019, I think, was our, our last known date, and then I believe that there was going to be some additional time needed to, to move years and years and years of evidence into a new storage system as well.
So we're looking at the building not going to be available till March or April. We're gonna, could we, could we hold this off until we table this and have our general discussion on all the different proposals for all the different sites? And then, 30 days isn't going to make that much difference if we're not gonna, if we're gonna want to own the building until we move out in April.
That's where tabling is certainly still on, I mean, that's certainly your option if you'd like to do it. Ultimately, why, why I would request that you do move forward is just because this is not the end of it. There are still agreements to come up with based on what dates we can actually transfer the property. There's improvements that do need to be made on the city hall side of things, where we would want to move forward, where we'd need to, I think we've had this conversation before of hiring a, an engineer and architect to actually do the plans and specifications for that. And so, that's where there's, there's time built in on our end as well. We're delaying, that basically puts us farther behind if you were to move forward with, with something in a month or two months.
How about, how about, could we put a, could we amend, amend the motion and go ahead and have the motion for the sale, but not until, not to be finalized until April? So that gives us plenty of time to review the other proposals to, I, I, I just don't want to be, I just don't want to throw him out. He's put a lot of work in, and he's tied them all together, and I just don't want to throw part of his proposal out, because if we throw that out, I don't know what happens to the rest of it. And his, his proposal should be considered just like everybody else's.
And that's where I would say, the, the path that you're going down is that if you do not want to disqualify Mr. Eaton's proposal right now, the only way to not, well, there's two ways to not do that. One would be to reject or to, to not approve the motion that's on the table right now, to approve the resolution as proposed, to sell the property to YSS, or to table it until a future point.
I'd like to, I, I think I'd like to move to table it for at least 60 days, and give us a chance to look at all the rest of them.
I'll consider that as a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? I don't think there is debate or discussion on tabling, so let's do the roll call.
Isim?
No.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
No.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Okay, it is tabled.
Actually, it was 3-3, so that technically fails.
I can't even count.
It was 4-2.
42, 42.
42.
Okay.
My bad.
No problem. Let's go on to the next resolution.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of a mechanically cleaned bar screen by Engineered Equipment Solutions for $133,898.
Barbara Anton, Superintendent at the Public Control Plant, asking you to accept this bid for a mechanically cleaned bar screen. Here to answer any questions you might have. Remember, this is the stormwater station in Riverview Park that basically takes care of the water from kind of the Swayze Street north through kind of that central corridor. Current operation is a maintenance staff with a pitchfork in a thunderstorm, so.
This sounds like an upgrade.
How effective is that?
It's not bad unless you're the guy with the pitchfork.
Hey Bob, can you, can, could you come to us once with a proposal less than $100,000?
It's need smaller equipment.
Yeah. I'd move for approval.
Second.
Any other questions, comments, public comment? Roll call.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Carrie. Number six is Resolution 2018-204, authorizing a full-time fire marshal position. Chief?
Motion.
Yeah, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Chief?
Good evening, Dave Ryerson, Marshalltown Fire Department. So, if you remember back in 2015, when my fire marshal retired, we chose not to refill that, we chose not to refill the position. Instead, what we did was, we took a portion of that salary, brought another firefighter on duty, and then we had two people that said, I want to be trained to become the fire marshal. So for the past three years, I've been sending those people to training, and I've been rotating them every six months into the fire marshal or inspector's position to try and gain some experience. The problem with that is, every time I've lost a firefighter, or I've had somebody go off on medical, I've had to pull that person back and quit, and put them back on the line to fill in for those, for those absences. Whenever time I do that, then I, I lose that ability to do the, some of the inspections that need to be done. So, because the majority of the salary and all of the benefits are already in our line item, or in our operating budget, to fill that position, you're only looking at $5,300 a year to fill that position full-time. So it'd be, it's my recommendation and request that the council consider refilling this position.
Does that continue as an annual cost of only 53?
Correct.
Hundred, thank you.
Contingent to step increases and other things that would be required.
But, but it, it doesn't go back to a full salary?
No.
At, in the next year. It's not just a one-year piece. Thank you.
And the, the purpose of having this in front of you here tonight is, we are beginning our budget planning process for fiscal year 20, and so, we'd like to kind of know what the lay of land is for personnel changes moving forward.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie. Madam Secretary, would you read the last resolution?
Resolution authorizing a letter of commitment with Habitat for Humanity to serve as a volunteer organization active in disaster for Project Valor.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Discussion.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director, and Jessica may weigh in on this as well, but we haven't talked a whole lot about Project Valor here at the council level, but this is a program that we are administering under the Public Assistance Declaration through FEMA. It's a volunteer agency's leading organized repair, and so the intention is, is that the FEMA funds go through the city to purchase materials for volunteer organizations to lead the installation labor of those items. So, this would be for homeowners in need of still kind of what I'll consider an emergency repair need as we're going into winter here. And as part of the project, we do need to work with a volunteer organization. We've been having a lot of communication with Habitat of Humanity of Iowa, and to lead that, and they have been working diligently to mobilize efforts to be able to lead that charge. And so, our recommendation would be to work with Habitat for Humanity of Iowa in this agreement to make Project Valor really come to be. It's a short window of time where the Project Valor is only a six-month project, which actually began September 12th, even though it really wasn't live until just about a week or so ago. And so, it's a short-lived piece there, but Habitat is preparing for a, a longer-term stay in our community, working on other repair and ongoing rebuilding throughout the, throughout the community. So, Jessica has anything to add to that, but that's the premise, or this specific organ, agreement is related to the Project Valor.
Any questions or comments?
I do. Can you clarify, this is available to anyone who owned? Is it also available to renters?
No.
But available to people who have purchased on contracts that have been recorded?
Yes, correct. If you have a recorded contract for purchase of the property, that is eligible, or if you own the home. But a rental property is not eligible for Project Valor.
If the homeowner had insurance, but they, it did not cover enough of it, is the homeowner available, or is the Valor program available to the homeowner?
Yes, absolutely. The, there's not an insurance eligibility criteria, so that isn't something that we are looking at. There is a question about whether or not they did have insurance, and, but it's not part of really the eligibility criteria as to what was covered or not, as part of that review. So, whether they were insured or uninsured, they're still eligible for Valor. And we are seeing a lot of applications where maybe they had some coverage but didn't cover everything. That's been quite common in the applications we've seen. There's also no income eligibility requirements. Again, this is assistance that's available to the city through the Public Assistance Declaration. It is not an individual assistance, and that's why there is not an individual eligibility requirement.
Michelle, how, how many applicants do you have to date?
At this point, this morning, I believe we had close to 70 applications. The project worksheet through FEMA and the state of Iowa were estimating around 400 possible projects with an average of 2,500 apiece in materials. We do have the availability to go up to 5,000 in materials, as I mentioned, and so, it could be more than what they are estimating, and that is acceptable. But we are trying to narrow down as much as we can and get people applied within a 60-day window from our scoping meeting that we had on the 23rd of October. So, we're really trying to push these applications and get people signed up. Obviously, the snow is coming in, so we know that that's an issue. And most of the volunteer labor will be looking at a lot of things, I anticipate, like window replacement, or fixing a door, or maybe a ramp if somebody has accessibility issues, mold cleanup, things of that nature. Stuff that would allow the homeowner to, to be home, and in a safe environment in their home. Not as much for roofing, just to make clear, I know we have some roofing needs. Region 6 Housing Trust Fund is still able to provide assistance with roofing applications, and so we encourage people to go that route, but we really won't likely see too many volunteer forces up on roofs, from a liability standpoint.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Carrie, very good. We now shift to the discussion phase of our meeting, and the first topic is the airport hangar project.
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Council may remember, we discussed this at our last meeting, I believe, and, and came aware with a, a clear vision for the size of the hangar, but as we will be signing a engineering contract with Clapsettle and Garber, wanted to make sure that we understood some of the secondary things. I believe in our last discussion, we did talk about the, the need for a terminal, whether we were willing to fund that at this time, whether we were going to look at the rehabilitation of the existing terminal. From a high-level glance, we've kind of given that a look over, and it's certainly possible, but not sure if it's cost-beneficial. Number one, being due to the sewer system out there. The, one of the probably biggest concerns is the size of the bathroom, and could you actually upsize the bathroom inside the facility? You certainly could, but is it, again, is it cost-beneficial, or are you looking at a, a new construction at the outside of the building? And then, one of the last discussion items was the need for a de-icing system. I, I think the need for a de-icing system still exists, but if we are to construct a larger hangar at 100 by 120 feet, we're gonna, we're gonna house some of the biggest planes inside overnight, probably reduces the need. Probably reduces the need for that de-icing system unless we were to get two planes of a, of a large magnitude on the same night. So I wanted to put that back out there, make sure that we have a clear vision of where we're going. That way, we can begin scope and fee discussion with Clapsettle and Garber. Be happy to answer any questions, or our airport manager or Clapsettle and Garber are here in case you have any questions of them. Yes, sir?
I, Your Honor, I, I took some time, went out and reviewed the airport, and we took a look at where the building might go. I, I think we came up with 100 by 120 building.
Correct.
Are we going to do $100, $100, $100, 100-foot door or a 90-foot door?
Certainly would be looking for your direction on that.
I think as big as you can get there.
That's exactly. The recommendation in my memo both last time and this time was that you want to make sure you have a little clear space outside of the wings for those. That way, you don't have to gently walk it through the door and take up a good amount of time.
So the two planes that I saw that were inside there, you'd want to more than, for what they're worth, you want to real gently walk them, and you don't want to dent them very much.
Excellent point.
But I think as long as we're going to build that and we're, there's people coming to Marshalltown, and that's the first thing they see in Marshalltown, I think we ought to include, include the, the construction of a new facility to...
Terminal building.
Term, for the terminal building that can house. We might even be able to use some of what we got there just for the pilots that are spending six hours and they just need someplace to hide. But I'd like to see us have both those, both those facilities new.
Other comments or questions?
Can I be reminded again on the financial side that I know on the hangar improvement sheet in front of us, the, without, with just the hangar, the, the city costs or the local funding costs would be 755,000, correct? And with a hangar or terminal development, it would be a million, almost a million more than that, 95,000 more than that, at 1,705,000.
That's correct.
Where does that funding come from?
We would have to pursue a general obligation bond for that. It's not something that you'd have to do right now. It'd be basically moving forward with construction in probably 2020, and so that would be, you know, the process that we just wrapped up with our bonding. That would be next, next fall, basically, that would have to be part of that bonding.
And that was my, my next question is, what would be the timeline for the construction of either or both of those facilities?
Yeah, we'd be looking at FAA fiscal year 20, which would start after September 1, 2019, just by the nature of the time as it is. I think CGA could correct me if I'm wrong, but we'd probably be looking, might even be pushed late, as late as spring of 2020, just depending on how things go with the design and where our cost estimates go.
Thank you.
Justin, I'm concerned, of course, with the funding and so on. Is it even possible through FAA to straddle fiscal years on a project? Is that possible?
It is. We're already looking at that, Counselor Martin, to make sure that our entitlement funds, it can build up only so far, and so to make sure that we utilize those to the fullest extent, yes, we would be looking at a design contract in one fiscal year and a construction contract in another fiscal year to take advantage as best as possible for our entitlement funds.
I'd certainly advise that would be one good approach. I do support the project. It's an economic development thing and a competitive thing, if you will, and it's long overdue.
Other comments?
Then do you need a motion to start it?
Yes, I think that's where there needs to be a motion to direct staff on what scope of work to prepare with CGA.
I would, I would then move to direct staff to proceed with the big hangar and the door size as big as possible. And also, the, what do you call them?
Terminal.
Terminal building and... And make, make use of the federal funds however we can, the best we can, so that, so we may get our biggest benefit we can out of them and with CGA.
I second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of discussion is involving the sale of State Street properties.
Yes, Your Honor, so I, I went back and listened to the last meeting to make sure that I had everything correct because there were two separate actions. There was the first to delay the consideration of the original three responses that were received on November 12th, and then the second was to reissue the request for a proposal for new responses to also then be discussed on the November 12th meeting. I still kept in, you know, the, the sort of graphic of who was bidding on what. As you'll recall, CGA had submitted a proposal for 12 East State Street. Merge Development had submitted an incomplete proposal that you really just, you couldn't consider. It didn't provide even a purchase price for those two items, so I have taken that one officially off the table because it really cannot be considered as it was incomplete. Then you have Mr. Eaton's proposal for 1220 and 26 East State Street, and then we have now received a proposal from Landover Corporation for also those three properties. The only new one is Landover, which is putting in a bid to purchase the 10,000, or of $10,000 to purchase all three properties for the purpose of constructing a 52-unit housing complex for families. This would be part of the low-income housing tax credit applications that are currently submitted. And so all of those proposals were included with there. One of the things Councilmember Cahill specifically asked for, you know, in the last meeting, was breaking down proposals further. CGA's proposal is very straightforward, $12,500 for just the one property at 12 East State Street. No contingencies. They would like to build on that, but didn't have anything formal at this point in time to, to bring forward. We've talked about some of the contingencies related to the police station that were in Mr. Eaton's proposal, and so that was really items one, two, I'll go back to two, one, one through three. The one item that we didn't really talk with the police station because the 10-year tax abatement really was not relevant was the 10-year tax abatement that is proposed here. The map that I included in the memo highlights the area that is currently the tax abatement area in downtown. If you would want to change to a 10-year tax abatement, that's not currently available. So we would have to come back and amend our ordinance to allow that 10-year tax abatement. However, you can't just make Mr. Eaton's proposal or any property as part of his proposal eligible only for that abatement. It becomes available district-wide. Also, again, related to his, it was kind of talked about in the other item as well that, you know, this would require the council to relinquish our actual cash value payment to, which was to be demolishing the building as directed by the city council. I mentioned the, the 10-year tax abatement, so that would only be for any new value created, which would be determined based upon a, a building permit. This property does have a much lower value at 54,500, and so if you do have a $700,000 improvement, it's likely the taxable value there would increase, but there would still be some money coming in on the base proposal there. And then finally waiving the building permit fee, just in looking at some other fees that we have charged here recently based on similar, using $700,000 as the repair value, that'd be waiving about $4,000 to $6,000 to, that would come into the city's general fund for that building permit. Finally, the proposal submitted by Landover, as I mentioned, is also fairly straightforward. $10,000 for all three properties for a multifamily residential complex. It would be, it would be eligible for the existing 100% three-year tax abatement. The, the major contingency that is part of that proposal is that it is subject to being awarded the low-income housing tax credits, of which there will not be a decision on their proposal until sometime in the spring of 2019, March or April. And so you couldn't actually move forward with transferring the property at some point in the near future. It would be holding and waiting to see what was happening with the Landover Corporation's application for the low-income housing tax credits. And so that is sort of the recap of what's happened since the last meeting and a summary of each of the three proposals that have been received for one or more of the properties.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Any other discussion?
I think it would be nice to hear a little bit more about the Landover project.
We do have Richard Sova with Landover, who is here today, who can tell you a little bit more about his project.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, Richard Sova, Landover Corporation President. The, the proposal that we submitted is like you said, very, very straightforward. We would acquire 12, 12 State, 20 State, 26 State Street. We have also under contract to adjoining properties on the east 28 East State Street and 106 North First Avenue. Those properties are under contract, and they would be combined with, with the other three properties we just talked to. It's a 52-unit, three-story apartment project, family project. Elevator property, of course. We would have enough parking, I believe, to do one and a half cars per unit, which is actually probably more than is required. And I, I think it'd be a terrific property considering the housing needs of the community right now, so. But I open, any questions you have?
Go ahead. Again, one of these financial questions that I appreciate you guys indulging me in this. The three-year 100% tax abatement, after that time, the property does go on the tax rolls, is this correct?
It, it does. One thing to note, and we have, you know, kind of discussed this before, is that this is a project that even though I, I was trying to look here, how many, like $8 million worth of construction cost, is that?
Probably nine, nine million.
Yeah, 8.9 million. So it does not get assessed at a construction value because it is based on rents paid, and so there's an income assessment and, that I'm speaking sort of on limited knowledge of, but it basically does not take the construction value. It takes that value down to be based on the income to be generated from the property.
It's, it's just, just saying, I mean, it's the same, the same, same type of project that you just, I think you approved to move forward on East, East Main Street. Same, same, basically, exactly, exactly the same project.
I, I think in previous discussions, Mr. Sova and I had, had tossed around, like, even though it's an 8.9 million dollar construction, probably assessed in the neighborhood of 1.1 million dollars. So, you know, those, that's the difference between a project that's based on the income assessment method.
And would this property have a full-time manager or a part-time manager, or is that...
On, onsite, onsite management, yes, full-time. All of our, all of our properties do.
And I was just curious if you could talk a little bit about other projects you've done in Iowa?
Okay.
Or other places?
We have, we have two other properties right now that we're proposing, actually in, in Marion and Dubuque. We have two properties under construction, one in Cedar Rapids, one in Atoma, and we have three properties that we've completed in the last, in the last three years in Marion and Cedar Rapids. So I think we have a total of like seven projects underway in Iowa right now.
Would the property be, and I don't know if this is yours, or back to our, our staff, would the property be subject to ideally following into our, the construction of it, the visual of it, following the downtown master plan that we voted to look through tonight? I'm just trying to decide what it might look like when it is finished and how that would affect our State Street corridor.
Yeah, absolutely. Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. You know, Richard and I have been talking for quite a while about his proposed plans, and even going back years and previous proposals, and, and I think certainly that it's something that we would want to consult with, you know, SEHs are going through, because we will be looking at design guidelines and things like that in the downtown, and that would be a part of what we would want to see in the final construction, and that it is something that is consistent with what our goals are for downtown development. And I would fully anticipate Richard is also thinking the same thing as wanting to, to fulfill that and being a downtown business and resident, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If I could, the, we, we build different types of projects, of course, depending on where they are. If they're out on the edge of town and, you know, in an area where you would build regular apartment projects, they look a certain way. If you're building in downtown, like we build in Cedar Rapids, for instance, or Marion, they're, they're more of an urban look, of course, and you, you want them to fit in, of course. So we, we can, we can design whatever, whatever works for, for the community, basically. I think we should, we should show the mayor and some of people some of the designs we're doing, I think.
I had the opportunity to look at many of the designs you did. I'm looking at your webpage right now, and there are some pretty good examples here.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If, if I may make a comment, it's not a question on that, but I have to admit, I'm very torn between what we have discussed earlier on the reconstruction of the senior center, and in the past, we have discussed that we are committed to providing our seniors a facility, whether it's within our Coliseum or within an area, so that we are not overlooking the population and the amenities available to the seniors. So I, I am very cognizant of their needs, but I'm also cognizant of our needs for housing and quality housing in our community, and that has also been on our strategic plan for moving the city forward. So there are some pieces here that, that I do think we really have to take a look at that long-term effect of what will meet the needs. We want our community to grow. We want it to have the housing and the facilities available for families to want to be here. Even without the tornado, many of the housing available in the first ward was not good housing. I mean, and we know people were living in some substandard facilities, and so I, I feel that need for us, if there's an opportunity, and this is an opportunity that we probably would not have had otherwise, it, it really is something that we have to look at providing affordable, reasonable housing for our community members. And we, I, I feel that that is a tenet that we have stated previously before we had the storm, before we had any of the movement to the, to the new police fire department. Yet, I also am very cognizant of the providing facilities for our, for all members of our community. So I do think we have to, to really weigh these options and take a look at that.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
This is for staff. Do, do they require just half a block? Is that about what the footprint needs?
In terms of development for, for an application?
For the housing?
You know, Richard actually could probably answer that maybe better than I, but, you know, each project is a little bit different in what their needs are. Obviously, our downtown projects with what we require for parking, how many stories a building is, you know, all those things come into consideration when you're looking at what those site land needs are. A quarter block, a half a block, I think Richard was looking at about a good three-quarter or what I'd call half a block. So both sides of the alley, I mean, actually.
Yeah, we... Both sides of the alley? Well, the reason, the reason I asked the question is, the block just east of, of the area we're talking about, there's only one business in there, and they were... about, there's only one business in there and they were almost totally destroyed. But we haven't talked a bit about it and it's sitting there. And matter of fact, the one building that was totally destroyed has been now removed. The only thing left there is the cover for the downtown.
The farmer's market.
Farmer's market. But the rest of that whole half a block, there's one building left. And I know, since I do business with those guys, they've told me a couple times that they don't know if they can afford to even rebuild that. So there's a whole half a block there that's just one block east of where we're talking about that would take care of some of the heartache I got with the Senior Citizens Center too, but it put it right downtown. So I'm wondering if we're looking at, if we couldn't look at a different location rather than the city location? I don't know. I'm just throwing this out.
I will say that, you know, as Richard and I have been communicating for, as I said, quite a while, we did look at lots of different options, you know, whether they be combinations of city properties, private properties. I shared a lot of information as to who was available and ownerships and to have those conversations. And so without getting into, you know, details of other private businesses, you know, that's not something that I want to do here. And so, but we did look at a lot of different options as where a project could occur and I think settled down that this was the most ideal for his situation.
Okay, thank you.
Something else I should also mention, you mentioned could we move to another site? In this particular case, the answer is no. On November 1st, all of the people that are applying for tax credit, we had to designate a site.
Oh.
And so this site is designated, if we don't move forward on this site, we will not be in this round.
Oh, okay.
This year for funding.
Great. And I know about three years ago, you were looking at another site over toward the Third Avenue area.
Yeah.
So you've been looking at Marshalltown for some time.
Been trying to smart my hometown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since we're just discussing here, I've had a conversation too with another developer who is looking at some of the downtown area, not right downtown, but the area skirting downtown. And his development is a similar size, but it's all normal rent. He isn't asking, it won't be low-cost housing, it won't be elderly housing, it'll be market rent prices, which, when he told me that's what he wanted to build, I said, let's get started, let's not waste any time here. But anyway, so he is looking at similar areas downtown and that proposal will be coming to us, I think, in the very near future, which I think is just great if we could get a 50-unit downtown market value rental spaces. I think that'd be fantastic. And I do know that his particular design is similar to the one over at Iowa State where they do commercial on the bottom and then they have three stories of apartments. So that's why he wants to be close to downtown. So that's just, I'm just throwing that out, just so you know, there's other people looking at these sites too, right now.
Well, and so this was open for a public bid, and so that's where if you want to consider anything else that's out there, you would need to reject and we'd have to start the process.
No, I'm just throwing this out so people, because I don't think everybody knew that this guy was even looking. But anyway, so just keep that in your mind, that there's another guy looking, and I don't think he even looked at this site.
Okay.
Yeah, Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development. You know, as you mentioned, Councilman Laverne, we do have a lot of folks that are out there looking for various types of development and we continue to work with them on all potential aspects. And I just, you know, did confirm with Mr. Sova too, there is a component typically with these tax credit projects that does include some market rate units in there, and he confirmed a 10%. So like many of ours, a tall corn, for example, which was recently redone, you know, it had 10% of its units, which are market rate units. Certainly, we hope to attract some developers that are doing market rate housing, doing new commercial development, all those kinds of things. And again, that's where the plan that we are working on will help us to attract those folks and to come up with possibilities that will encourage that development to happen and find the best locations for it. And I think we're going to have opportunities before us in the downtown to do all of those things. So I think that in effort of hitting our housing continuum needs as a community, that is something that we want to keep in mind, that we do have needs on all levels. That was in our previous housing needs assessment and we are still working on that update, but I anticipate fully that it'll continue to say we have needs on all levels. And so we'll do our best efforts to meet those as a community and working with developers.
And Michelle, I assume that you'll also tell us to the point where we're getting to the glut, if we, as we look at different projects and if we put 500 units downtown, we want to make sure that we're going to be able to fill what we have. So I'm sure you'll keep us appraised.
Absolutely.
And as you said, updating that so that we are making sure that we can fill what we put in.
Certainly, that is something that we want to, we don't want to oversaturate our market, we know that. And I think that through the market analysis that the Iowa Finance Authority does on these tax credits, that's one of those key pieces that they did with this preliminary application, that all those developers are kind of awaiting that information from Iowa Finance Authority as they conduct their own kind of a market analysis on these needs to confirm that there is that appropriate market in our community. So not only do we have our private needs assessment, which is occurring, but we also will have that from the Iowa Finance Authority to, you know, confirm what our needs are on the affordable housing.
One more thing. The November 1st date where I said is that's when you had to designate a site, the reason for that was, just what Michelle said, IFA then basically starts a market study on the project. So there's a market study going on in this project right now, on these State Street pieces. So that's why it's going on.
Mr. Sova, I had one more question. Would you consider building a senior citizens behind your, the building there, like the anytime fitnesses or something and throw that in with your project?
When we were looking at that site, I think I mentioned previously, we were trying to buy the other two properties on Center Street. We're still trying to buy those properties. The idea would be to build either a second phase of housing or some other use. That would be our goal. I don't know. If it could be a senior center, that would be great. Our buildings do include fitness, fitness centers and community rooms and all those good things, but they're included in the position. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue again, sorry. This, again, I've got to take exception to this memo that the city administrators put out because it doesn't list everyone evenly. The proposal you just heard about has three contingencies. One, the city has to spend 500 to 600,000 dollars to clear the lot before they can start. Now, they're looking at buying two private properties. I don't know if those owners are clearing those lots for them, but I assume they're capable of clearing the lots, which could save the money, the city a bunch of money. Two, a big contingency stated right in the last paragraph of their memo is that they're going to come back and ask for a 90% incremental tax rebate for 10 years. Based on what Ms. Kinzer said the taxable value of the property is, that's going to cost the taxpayers over $30,000 a year for 10 years. Now, we're tearing down the senior center to save $30,000 a year. So that doesn't wash. We're complaining about spending $30,000 to fund the senior center and we're going to give these guys $30,000 a year for 10 years? So that's three contingencies that she left off of their proposal. Now, she's talked about the tax abatement problem and I did some research and there's a resolution, 2012-154, which gives special tax abatement to 211 East Main, which is the senior housing project that they're rebuilding now. It has its own special tax abatement district, which means that that same thing, in theory, could be done for the senior center. Also, she mentions a three-year tax abatement, 100% for the Landover Corporation. Now, three years is currently the only thing available for commercial property, and that's what the senior center would be if I restore it. 10 years, five and 10 years are also available for residential property, which the senior residents at 211 East Main takes advantage of a special 10-year tax abatement with a special scale, five years at 100% and then sliding scale after that. So it is possible to address all of these concerns again. And while both other proposals are good proposals, they don't address the bigger picture. We only have one senior center. It can be up and running in a year, but I don't know how long their development's going to take. And from a parking lot standpoint, I've talked to, I mentioned to, I think it was Matt at CGA, that there's a couple other properties that are available for parking lots near their office. And so there's some options. And even if they wanted to park, okay, we have a growing senior center or senior population, so we need more parking for that senior citizen center. So that's why I asked for both parking lots. So anyways, that's basically all I have unless you have any questions.
There does need to be, I'll go back to my memo where I did reference an action to be taken, that if you want to choose to move forward with any bid, a motion will be needed to bring forth a resolution to the November 26 council meeting to set a public hearing on the proposal. That public hearing would then be held at the special council meeting on December 26. If you take no action, then we, there's no action taken on any of the bids at this point.
Your Honor, I have one clarification question. Ben, we're in the discussion and this might be relevant to what I said before about the senior citizen center. I think that we probably, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we have to make a motion to rescind the demolition of the senior citizen center first, before we ever do any, before we ever move anywhere farther? We have to rescind that because everything that Mr. Eaton, his contentions are, excuse me, with the senior citizen center. So we can't move forward on him until we decide that we're not going to tear it down, correct?
Unless you want to go a different direction, which I'm proposing we accept the Landover bid and I move that we.
And I understand what you're saying.
At least move forward on that.
I'm trying to clarify to these people that are thinking that's the only option that we have is to tear it down. I do, I also know that, I don't know if these people realize it or not from their board, that we have talked to them about the Coliseum. They have assured be they're going to make a statement. Whether they do that or not, I don't know. I can't put words in their mouth of what they're going to do, but they're contingent on, excuse me, they're contingent on we were going to tear it down. They are looking for a place to be. So we need a clarification on what we're doing before we try to move forward. Now, if you actually go with Landover, then that's a dead issue. And then it also contingent on the police department where also throws Mr. Eaton's proposal out because that's contingent on this whole other process. So I guess what I'm saying is if we're going to move forward on one, let's do it that way. If we're going to move forward on Landover, it kind of throws everything else kind of out the window of, I just don't want the seniors to think that we don't have their interest in mind. We've worked quite a bit on the outside, working on the Coliseum and that proposal with their board. So it's not that we're trying to undermine the senior citizens. As I look out there, I'm probably older than most of them sitting there, so I'm kind of in that boat too. So I don't think that that's what we're doing or that's what I was proposing on the fact that we were selling it. That was voted on. If we're going to do some of these things, we have to rescind that first.
We did get an email today from Matt Garber that he intended to be here tonight representing CGA, but his wife was in a car accident and hospitalized up in Waterloo, so he wasn't able to be here. And he had requested in that email that we delay discussion about his proposal until later.
To just respond to what Councilmember Gowdy said, to be very clear, your direction to me over two previous meetings was to, one, I mean, bring forward a resolution to accept the actual cash value payment for demolition, which did happen. We accepted that, or that resolution moved forward. We have received the actual cash value payment and that's where I'm actively working with the firm towards putting all of our ducks in a row of demolition on the senior citizen center. The second part was to work with the downstairs portion of the senior citizens' building, which was the senior citizen center, to locate them in the Coliseum. And those meetings have happened. I've asked them to basically bring forward a proposal to the city, which we'd hoped would be done here in the month of November. I'm not sure if that's going to happen or not. They have indicated that they do want to be located in the Coliseum. You know, related to all of that as well is Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging, where I had kept you abreast of the ongoing conversations about trying to temporarily or permanently locate them on the second floor of City Hall. They ultimately chose, or decided that location was not going to be a viable location for them, and so they are pursuing their own things. One item that does get very caught up here and is very confused, the senior citizen center is operating and functional out at the Nicholas Mall, out there on Nicholas Street. And so they are open and there's programming, I believe, that the TR did do a small little article and picture on that. And so their organization has continued to exist. The Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging has also been looking for space. I haven't heard a recent update about whether or not they have been able to reopen or if their staff is still working out of their own homes, but that was something that they were trying to do. So anything related to the senior citizens' building does not mean that organizations that existed as separate, independent entities of the city have ceased to function. And so that's where ultimately those conversations and what you tasked me to do to work with both of those entities has been happening and is continuing to happen. And that's where I'm hoping to have something before you if things work out here at this last meeting in November, that's truly a proposal from the senior citizens' center on locating in the Coliseum.
Very good. I did hear a motion to accept the Landover proposal. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Do you have a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss it again?
There's a discussion.
That is the problem about having that, being short, like I am, and having that monitor right there.
I'm short. Jim Palmer, 3111 South Ave Street. Correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we have to take bids for the demolition of the senior center, sir? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And then, I had it, I had it in here in my thought, I apologize.
I'm glad that never happens to me.
Hopefully it doesn't happen to you, being a courtroom.
When it does, I tell people I've got a mind like a steel trap. It's rusty and illegal in 17 states.
I hate when I lose my train of thought. Yeah, it was, it had to do with the demo, but. I apologize. I won't take any more of your time.
Further discussion among the councilors about, oh, another hand up. You may.
Again, Robin Manseries, 707 East Boone Street. I would like to stand here as a resident of Marshalltown for all my life. And I hear you talking about the Landover proposal and the CGA proposal, and you've all talked to them. Obviously, there's lots of conversations going on, but is there? them, obviously there's lots of conversations going on, but is there, but I also heard Mark Eaton speak and say, but nobody's contacted me to have that personal one-on-one conversation on what his ideas and things are. So I just, is that the way it is? You don't take in all of the information on all of the proposals? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other council? Yes.
Anna Wolvers, 213 Thomas Drive. While I agree that we need more housing things, I mean, in reality, it's Marshalltown. What draw do we have to downtown versus anywhere else? And second of all, if we do get more housing downtown, would we then expand the metro transit options for those low-income families that would need transportation to JBS or Swift or Walmart? I've worked with people with the special population, and I've tried to teach them the bus system, but when it closes down at 5:00, and most of those businesses, I never get to visit as a full-time employee that close by 5:00. I mean, what would be the draw for a developer to develop downtown versus closer to shopping and eating and work facilities for those that may reside there? It's not like downtown Des Moines where you have all those businesses and restaurants that are open longer.
Any further public comment? Any further discussion by the council? We're going to have to have a time limit sometime here. Okay.
The senior center, center building has been a drawing point, and you have heard many people speak up here saying to save that building because people came from all the counties around to gather there in that building, and you've all heard that. That building is historic, and it had survived the tornado, and it can be repaired, and it doesn't need to be demolished, and that's all I'd like to say.
Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. I am not an attorney, but I am a licensed insurance agent and have been for several decades. In stating that, I did go through and I did look at the insurance policy, and first of all, I want to congratulate councilors, mayor, for insuring our properties like you should have. You insured at a replacement cost. I went through all the different buildings that are for sale. The one I want to specifically talk about is the senior citizens' building. It was insured for, one of the questions that came up in one of the earlier council meetings was $3,345,586. As you get into the common agreement provisions, duty's in the event of a loss, to quote, "Take reasonable steps to protect the covered property from further damage." I do realize, and excuse my language, we all went through hell that day. We're all still going through hell, trying to recover. I remember looking at Mayor Greer, sorry, I'm pointing you out, and Jessica Kanzler, and all of us, we were exhausted. We are exhausted from recovering. But my question is, why didn't we secure the facility like it should have been? There was money built into this policy to do that. I don't know why we didn't do that. The ACV, we settled on the actual cash value instead of replacement cost. I stood up here and specifically asked that we go back and talk to the adjusters. There are provisions within this contract that allows us to go back and address that with the adjusters. I don't think that was ever done. That's a question. Okay, that's water under the dam. There's close to $700,000 out there. I think it would be fiscally responsible for us to stop. Look at Mr. Eaton's proposal and use that money wisely. Don't go in there and tear down and demolish, spend half a million dollars to demolish and leave nothing there. Sell it to another landowner or developer for $10,000. That's not fiscally responsible. So please, look at the contracts, and maybe you need to ask those questions. Why were these provisions not followed?
Any further council comments? Let's have the roll call.
What are we voting on? I'm sorry. We, I don't, we don't have anything here yet.
Move to accept the Landover Corporation proposal and then second it.
Could we have, could I have a definition? Yes, if they are not picked as one of the developers, then we still own it anyway, right?
We, we won't know that until March or April of 2019. And so, yes, so that's where we would continue to own the property until they receive the tax credits.
Could we, final question, could we cover rough on it, just to maintain it until then, or are we going to tear it down before then?
Your direction to me has been to proceed with demolition, and so that is the direction that I will proceed with until that direction changes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make one more comment on this? I think that some people have brought up maybe having to supplement our transit facility. I think one of the things, I know one of the things that that was key to me as I ran for city council was to improve housing in our downtown area. I think the more housing we have downtown, the more additional development will continue, whether it is some additional grocery stores, some additional shopping, additional clothing stores, whatever it may be. I'd love to get a, on my side of town, I need a convenience store, I need the Casey's to be back up, and a lot of people in that part of town use Casey's. But we could use, again, additional amenities in our downtown to make our downtown strong. I agree that the senior center brought people downtown, and I also think that, and thank you for clarifying, that we have worked with the seniors, the people involved in running the senior center, that with a proposal, we can continue to do that in the Coliseum area. So I think that we have to look at the overall picture of what our goals are, to have a strong downtown, a strong community, where people can have affordable housing, amenities that work for them, and I think that we need to, to look at that big picture. There are some very attractive small things going on here, but I think in the long term, one of my, one of the things that I, I ran on was that we have a strong downtown and improve housing in the downtown area to then build up the other amenities that we have downtown. So as we're thinking about that, I encourage all the councilors to look at that big picture and how that will affect our community in the long run.
Any more comments or clarifications? Do please call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Carey?
It did carry. Very good. The final discussion item for the night on the agenda is the placard of property update.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. You know, we've had some questions and things that have come up wondering about what the status is on some of the properties that we've placarded, and I'm going to expand on that a little bit and relate it to our, again, to our FEMA declaration for public assistance. One of the projects under which with FEMA that we'll be working has to do with demolition of abandoned properties and that are considered to be a danger. And so as we began the process related to the placarding, it really kind of is founded on a lot of that premise, is that these are properties that are a danger and are structurally unsound. We went through a fairly intensive process about a month after the tornado with the state and federal agencies to do an assessment of all these parcels that were affected in the path of destruction and identify their damage level assessments, whether it be no impact to a destroyed status. In the end, we ended up with a pretty lengthy list, over 300 properties of major and destroyed status properties, and those were both residential and commercial. Of those properties, we then requested structural assessments be completed. And so we worked with structural engineers to do those assessments to identify which properties were then structurally unsound. The ones that were structurally unsound, if we had not had any communication already, which some of them we, we already had been in communication with owners, especially in our commercial capacity of people who were, well, I'm working with my insurance, I'm going to demolish, or I'm going to be rebuilding, whatever it might be. Those that we really had no knowledge as to where they stood on things, we did move forward with the placarding. In the end, we had ended up placarding about 57 residential properties and 24 commercial properties. This is an ever-changing list, and it's a very much a moving target for us as people are taking out permits, whether they be for rebuilding or for demolition, as they're contacting us, saying that they're working with their insurance providers. Much of the placarding began mid-September, and we gave owners a 30-day window to communicate with us their plans, knowing that we weren't going to necessarily see action in that 30 days, but we wanted to open up that line of communication. And for some of those property owners, we did. You know, we had many that did call and said, this is my plan, this is what I'm working on. They've continued to update us throughout that process. We do have a handful, though, that we have had zero communication with, and we anticipate that these are likely properties that will ultimately become abandoned and have to be something that the city will have to take action on in the future. So as we work through this, as I said, ever-changing status on these properties, we're monitoring this and trying to develop a list that will be able to be available for FEMA at that 60-day window from our scoping meeting, as we kind of talked about earlier. This one was on the 31st, so we have until the end of the year to essentially identify which potential properties we may be looking at that the city will have some responsibility in demolition. The FEMA public assistance is only applicable to residential, residential properties. So we're going to have, to have some discussions as a, as a council, as you are, will be making some decisions about how we proceed with some commercial activities as well. We hope that those are much fewer than our residential expectations. But we will have several that, on the residential side, that ultimately will become abandoned properties about six months after the tornado. So as we approach January, I think we hit our six-month mark, where the city will have the opportunity to look at the 657A process. This is something we've talked about and utilized in the past about acquisitions in order to position us to be able to do those demolitions. If we were to move forward with demolitions right now in order to get the FEMA reimbursement, we have to have right-of-entry and hold harmless agreements signed by property owners, which, as I mentioned, aren't communicating with us right now as it is. And so that holds a whole different kind of light of things that we would have to address if we're going to try to move forward on a demolition before we would have control of a property. And so the what, the path that we are working towards at this point in time is that we're working with these properties which have both been placarded and ones which have not been placarded, but which we've seen no activity, and there are some of those as well, that we are working to identify those, to develop that list in preparation for that final kind of end date with FEMA, to identify these are the potential sites that we may have to take action on so that we can ultimately hopefully, excuse me, be able to get that reimbursement piece that comes forward in that activity. Certainly, this is not something that we want to have happen. You know, none of us conjured up the tornado and asked for this to happen to our community. We don't want to be in a position where we're placarding properties and we're losing these structures. Unfortunately, that's the position that we're in, and we are going to have to look forward on this. We had already been talking about dangerous dilapidated buildings prior to the tornado. You all know that we were aware of some, we did done demolition, we had others in queue ready to kind of move forward, and those are still out there, and we're still working with those. Everything did get put on hold a little bit, I admit that. But we know that this will add to that, and if we have the opportunity under the public assistance declaration to be able to utilize some reimbursement funds, I think it's something that we should be definitely looking at as a community to remove the properties which will ultimately become dangerous to, or already are even dangerous, buildings in our community. So that's kind of where we stand. We're continuing, if somebody hasn't contacted us and they have a placard property and they haven't contacted us at this point, they can still call. There's no, there's no drop dead that if they didn't contact us by the end of October or by the 15th, that we'll no longer talk to them and they're out of luck. There's going to be a lot of process involved with the 657A notifications that will still give them plenty of opportunities to come forward to make decisions. We know some owners are working with Mid-Iowa Community Action, has been very accommodating to help people who have placarded properties that are wanting to stay in their home, to try to help get them connected and pay for, whether it be structural engineers, to determine a full assessment on what needs to be done with their property, to connect with contractors or to connect with demolition providers that can help to take that next step for them so that they too can maintain their property and rebuild. We've had some owners that have said, you know, I'm going to sell my property. We have people out there buying, renovating, flipping, looking to get that housing stock back online. Those are also options. So there's a lot of things that can be done with these properties as we're in this mid-state of flux, I'll say, and we're open to all of that. We just are asking for communication as we move forward. The real concern for, I think, us as a city is going to be the ones that truly do become abandoned with no activity, no interest of ownership responsibility, where people have just truly walked away, and it now becomes a burden on the city to have to take action. So those are, that's what we're looking at. I will say, just kind of as a, in relation to this, we have been putting up the demolition permits on the city website since the tornado. That was something that we actively began doing right away, and we have issued 148 demolition permits since the tornado. Now, that includes dwellings, garages, portions of buildings, commercial buildings, a number of different things. But that's a lot of activity. We know that there's activity out there occurring without permits, and we're doing our best to try to track that down and stop it in its midst and get people on board with the permits and the inspections that are necessary. That's a big challenge, and, you know, I've got a tremendous staff working very, very hard to accommodate that on a daily basis. You know, we've had 23 dwellings of those permits that were issued, 23 of those were dwellings, 15 were commercial properties, the rest were kind of combination of other things, and I think 94 accessory buildings. So a large, a large amount of demolition that's occurring, and we continue to see that happening, some of which is just people waiting on contractors to get to their, their spaces. So that's a big piece where maybe they've contracted with somebody and they're just like, well, it's a couple months out before we can get there. And that's fine, we can understand that. And so as we, we move through this and with the process between the placarding and the demolition and the rebuilding, I know that we're trying to do our best to kind of keep a hold of these 300-some properties plus that were really designated as major and destroyed and track that status. If somebody has concerns about a property, they can contact us, you know, we can investigate that. We know that there is over 900 minor property damage sites, and many of those still became major and have been demolished or things of that nature. So we're seeing things cross those lines, and that's just a process that we're just having to kind of work with because we know that that first glance assessment wasn't going to catch all of the issues. So that's what I have for an update. You know, we'll try to continue to do this. We can update you again, probably as we have that list more finalized, closer to the end of December, we'll have a better idea of how many properties we might be looking at. And still, even after that point, we may have some that drop off, and that's okay. The FEMA portion of this assistance is, is under the emergency category, which is a six-month window, but we do understand that extensions are possible with this program where they may not be with our Valor program. And so recognizing that there is time associated with needing to do demolitions and so on and so forth. on and so forth. So I'd entertain any questions that the council has about that, and hopefully I've answered some of the questions on status, on where we are. And just please understand it is a very much a moving target, so it's hard to pin it down completely.
I started the day with an 8:00 meeting at the library today with the all-staff training, and I'd like to repeat what I said there. I hope you folks out here realize just how hard the city staff have been working since that tornado. I mean, they were, they were working hard before the tornado, but it's just been incredible, the, the amount of work that has gone into this.
Absolutely.
Your Honor. Yes. Center in Maine?
Right.
Where are we at?
You know, that's one that obviously catches a lot of communication and discussion. We know that. You know, the property owner has been very, very open with us in working through their process, contrary to some of the statements that have been out there in the, in the public. You know, the owner has been very open in working with insurance, working with contractors, working with neighboring property owners to, to get things going. It's not been an easy process with our downtown buildings, and, and this, that is not the only one by any means where we have these shared wall situations. It heads a whole level above and beyond dealing with your own building, where now you're working with how do you address so that neighboring wall stays, or who's responsible? How is it dealt with? These are very complex issues. Contractors have to be wary of what they're doing and that they're handling it appropriately and not putting themselves into a situation of liability, and insurance providers have to approve it all. So these levels of complexity for these downtown buildings especially is severe. And so know that in, although we're not publicly stating every time I communicate with a property owner, many of them are communicating with us and are keeping a very open line of communication with us and taking a lot of heat in the public, which is unfortunate. And so it's, it's a, it's an eyesore, and we understand that, and they're working on it, and we have several buildings like that downtown or across the city. And we're just doing our best to make, make sure that it's being done correctly and will be a best end result.
The detritus on the sidewalk was removed.
I know it. How about, how about the church just east or west here? That looks like somebody could get hurt pretty easy there.
It's absolutely a concern. You know, and again, we're, we're trying to open those lines of communication there, but some are more challenging than others. So some owners are, are very open with us and others are less. And those are the ones that we'll have to probably talk about down the road when we don't have communication and, and what steps we need to take.
Michelle, you mentioned that the, you, the initial placarding did about 57 homes. Do you have any ballpark figures of how many additional homes could be affected through the abandonment? I mean, are we talking 20 more or 50 more or?
I'll tell you that we have on the major slash destroyed status, we had a total of 239 homes. So many of those, we have seen no change in. I've had staff driving around this past, late last week, looking at those that are under the major destroyed but yet structurally sound with, have had zero change. I don't know what that number will be in the end. I, I'm guessing it's probably gonna be over 100 overall. I don't know how much over 100. Will it be closer to two? Perhaps. There's, there's a lot of properties that have really had no activity. And so whether some are just waiting, some are still trying to figure out funds, or whether they've been abandoned, we really don't know, but we've not received building permits or demo permits or maybe had communications. So unfortunately, I think we're gonna see some big numbers, and that's when we'll start to, those discussions of rebuilding and new housing become even more important as we try to fulfill that need of, of the loss that we have.
I, I just wanna comment that I appreciate you said that even now, if owners wanted to contact you and, you know, had not by the 31st or the 15th, whatever date it was set, that you're certainly willing to talk with them. And I appreciate that flexibility because working with many of those homeowners, they were very unsure of what they wanted to do. And one of the key points that people said was that they did not want their home to just automatically go to the city.
Absolutely.
And I certainly said, you know, even if your home has serious, serious damage, it's still your home, and you have the right to make those decisions. And so I think we have to, again, relay that to homeowners and to, to those people who don't have a plan yet. We're trying to put those pathways out there through the different entities that are providing funding to repair as well as working with them in whatever way we can. So I appreciate the flexibility that your department is taking and encouraging people to still call.
Still call.
Let's make that plan.
Absolutely. Still call. Like, as I mentioned, we, we don't, we don't want these properties. This is not the end game of us to somehow accumulate a lot of properties. That is not what we want, and we wanna be very clear about that. We would much rather see property owners be able to take control of their situations, get assistance if assistance is needed. You know, we can help try to connect those with what resources may be out there. But yeah, certainly, this is not our goal to take out, take over properties. Will we have some that we need to? Yes. But that is not what our intentions are, is to try to build up some stockpile of property. That's not what we're looking to do. We want to work with owners. We want to be able to have them rebuild, sell, whatever their case may be. I would much prefer it to be done and not have to be on my plate for something else to do. So.
Well, I appreciate that because I do think people are fearful of that, of the city taking their homes. And that is, I, I glad, I'm very glad that you clarified that, that that is not the intent.
Yeah. People need to come and see us. You know, Joyce Brown, our, you know, has been our lead grant manager. She has taken over a lot of the activity with FEMA. We're very fortunate to have her on board. She has got a multitude of files at her desk and willing to talk with anybody about what their process is. Has Morello in our office. You know, if there's a language issue in our Spanish-speaking community, we have that resource. We can connect you. Mica is, although their initial financial assistance is over, they still are continuing case management through April, I believe, in the Long-Term Recovery Committee, which has been formed and is very active, can continue with some of those other resources in connecting folks. So there are things out there. If people are looking for help, we're gonna try to figure out how to do that. Again, we're talking about some last resort issues when it comes to our hands and dealing with these properties.
We had a family friend who is a priest who would like to say the mind can only absorb what the seat can endure, and we're getting to the point where I'm gonna have to take a break and stand up and walk around. And it is, we're two, two hours and 37 minutes into the meeting. Unless anybody has any specific questions of Michelle, I'm tempted to go to the open mic section, section. Yes, sir?
Well, I wasn't planning on talking today, but I.
Oh, you gotta say who you are and.
Oh, sorry. Ken Walton, 1319 Westland Street. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but then I heard Leon ask about specific properties, and there's been one on Main Street that's been annoying me for months. And I don't know the exact address, but it's where the vape shop is, across the street from, from the Fiddling Whistle. And apparently, that's three buildings with one facade. And I asked at the vape shop about the upstairs there because two-thirds of the building, the windows has, have not even been covered. There's been no action taken to protect the property. And in the vape shop, they tell me that they're getting water through the adjoining wall. And so I'm, I'm wondering about that property and if the owners are taking any responsibility for it.